Conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting, there's a time for public participation during a regular meeting of which this is one. Mrs. Pedder, roll call.
Mr. Simons.
Present.
Mrs. Kessler.
Here.
Mrs. Wyder.
Here.
Mrs. Cleveland.
Here.
Mrs. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Carr, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'd like to have a motion for approval of the agenda.
Some move.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, Mrs. Pedder.
Mrs. Kessler.
Yes.
Mrs. Wyder.
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Simons.
Yes. Motion approved. Uh, Mr. Carr, do we have an inspirational message?
Yes, Dr. Maxim will come forward and introduce, um, where's he at, oh, he's over there, inspirational message from Princeton Community Middle School.
Dr. Max.
Yeah, we're, hey. We got an inspirational, uh, video that we're gonna show that we had the kids report, so.
We're queuing it up right now.
Hey, this is Dr. Maxim, I'm the principal at Princeton Community Middle School, I'm here to introduce our inspirational message to our Board of Education. One of our things this year is that we focused on being hashtag limitless, where we work to our full potential, be the best version of ourselves, so I want you to really focus on what our students are saying, hashtag limitless means to them.
Here at PCMS, we strive to something truly extraordinary, the limitless is something that resides within each and every one of us.
As.
Teachers.
Coaches.
Counselors.
Librarians.
Sanitaries.
Security slash student manager.
Air professionals.
Nurses.
Principals.
Intervention specialists.
Student teachers.
Institute.
This is what makes me special, isn't my grades, my talent, my learning ability.
Well, here's the secret, it's not just about grades or talent, it's something much more important, the value of potential that lies within each and every one of us.
Everyone in our hashtag PCMS family has potential regardless of race and ethnicity, LGBTQ+ identity, or socioeconomic background.
You are not defined by the limits of this space, I pray for the down-to-mic creativity of mine.
You are limitless.
Each student in our school holds a unique story and a set of dreams and a well of untapped potential.
And guess what, doubt is just like a plane waiting to be ignited.
You are not defined by the grades of your report card.
You are defined by your social media.
Who are younger is good to speak.
Or letting them have.
You are defined by all.
Your resilience.
Your curiosity.
And your willingness to learn and grow.
Life is not a race, it's an adventure.
If you choose to have the power to shape our own destiny.
How do you unleash this limitless potential within you?
Believe in yourself, believe in the unique gifts you bring to the world.
Embrace your core's passion and individuality, because that is what makes you unstoppable.
Don't be afraid to try to be, it's not just about fantasy, it's about what's for your future.
Take hope and remember, the only thing that exists is the love that you place on your imagination.
Surround yourself with positivity, leave the sunshine of solace in your day, and let others see you need your potential.
Remember that the journey to unlock your life's potential is not just one to achieve, it's a collective adventure.
And we're all together.
And let's cheer each other on.
Support one another and celebrate the incredible potential that resides in each and every person in our school.
The world is ours to take.
And we can't wait to see if they're destroying you in that.
And each of us will make what we realize we are.
I am limitless!
Hashtag twenty-three, twenty-four, school theme this year was being limitless, so our administration has challenged every student here to be limitless by not limiting the boundaries that somebody else puts in front of you and being the best version of you. As always, go VICE. Dr. Max, any other words? No, the kid said it all. Thank you. Okay, now we will move to the recognition of visitors, uh, we have more than one, just so everybody's, uh, budgeting your time properly. The person will have three minutes to address the board. We're now in the matrix and we have a timekeeper to make sure that three minutes aren't here too. Um, Misty Kaiser, is she here?
All right, come on in.
Right there.
Can you hear me? Good, okay. Um, I would like to thank the board for allowing myself and others to address you tonight. Uh, my name is Misty Kaiser, I am a parent of a first grader at Evendale, I'm the vice president of the PCA and I have been active in the Princeton Equity Committee, uh, though due to work and PTA obligations, I have been unable to attend the last two meetings. I am very grateful to be a part of a district that is so dedicated to diversity, inclusion, and equity. The Equity in Action mission states that equal access to success is the cornerstone of the Equity in Action Plan, which brings me to the reason I am here tonight. Recently, I was informed that due to budget concerns, the board decided not to fill a music teacher position at Woodlawn and instead have Alison Kroski, Evendale Music Teacher, split her time between the two schools. We were told that our kids would get the basics, but the concerts in Evendale Ensemble would not be possible going forward. I'm super nervous, sorry. So you're telling the students of two elementary schools that they will not have equal access to education as the other elementary schools. Imagine my surprise when I was reviewing the agendas from the meetings this year and found that what the board did find the budget for. One of the things that you found a way to approve was a forty to fifty million dollar athletic facilities upgrade. Now, I have no doubt that the board takes its responsibilities regarding district's budget very seriously and you have difficult decisions to make. The families of Princeton schools also have budgets and have to make tough decisions, but I don't think any family would decide to stop paying the water bill because they wanna put it in a swimming pool. How are you justifying removing educators while you are spending millions on athletics facilities? Where is the equity in that? Music education increases creativity, confidence, emotional development, and musical activities enhance students' capacity to learn and improve their academic performance. This year is a music teacher, next year will be art, all of the students at Princeton deserve better than basic, which is why we have chosen this district and this school. The Evendale PTA is dedicated to the success of our students and this school. We believe strongly in the community in building and maintaining enrollment, and cutting programs and educators is not the way that we're gonna accomplish that. That's all.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Laura Gori.
Hello, board, uh, thank you for having me here tonight, um, my name's Laura Gori, I am also a parent of an Evendale first grader, um, I am here showing support for what Misty's talked about, um, with equal concerns for our students, um, you know, we are very passionate about arts and music and that being an integral part in our children's education, and the loss of a full-time music teacher at both Evendale and Woodlawn, I think, would incredibly impact the students' ability to have those types of specials be a part of their daily life and really build their confidence. Um, I know there's maybe some arguments that Evendale is a smaller school, but it's really, really concerning to hear that there are cuts being made around educators, where I really think that's Princeton's, you know, should be something that is a priority in building that and continuing that, and I don't see how cutting a full-time teacher into two part-times, especially with Woodlawn being a bigger school, is going to help that at all. I personally have a son who is not into athletics, and so the arts, music, and sciences is where we encourage him to grow his confidence, and in his first year of being in music, that has grown and he's learned so much. Mrs. Kroski is a true asset to Evendale in so many ways, not just in the music department, she contributes so much, um, for the success of our students. I would much rather see Princeton make decisions to support educators and the education importance in all schools over some things I've seen being made priorities for funds, like athletic facilities, et cetera. I believe in Evendale, we made the choice to attend Evendale as a resident of Evendale, that's like living on an island, not many people do that, um, but we wanna show our community that's our support and we wanna show our educators that makes such a difference with our students and with our schools that support as well. Um, so yeah, I, I just wanted to show my support and hope that you will reconsider or take a look at some of our concerns and keeping educators like Mrs. Kroski who truly make a difference in our children's lives. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Kimberly Max.
Good evening, my name is Kimberly Cornell-Marks, I am also a parent at Evendale Elementary School, um, I'm here to talk about what Misty and Laura have already addressed. I know every single one of you is proud of the arts at Princeton, because I see how you address and recognize arts, especially in the high school and the middle school, and in order to get our students to that level, they need foundational music. Foundational music starts in elementary school. If we start to take away the music teachers from the music school, from the elementary school and the arts and gym teachers, then where are we gonna be, what students are we going to be celebrating once they get to middle school and high school? Are they going to be able to have that same reach, that same success? The amount of effort and dedication that Mrs. Kroski has put into her day is not just in the music classroom, she works on student leadership, she works on, um, outside extracurricular activities that we do not have at Evendale because it is small, um, and a lot of the families in our community use that to go to other schools in our area, and then enrollment lowers, and I know that that is a huge concern. We want to increase enrollment at Evendale Elementary and keep those students at our school, one of those things, one of the ways to do that is not take away that full-time educators that are in the building. We already have part-time counselors, we already have part-time librarians, please do not take away a full-time educator in our building, especially when she's not just in the music classroom. Thank you very much.
The next person will be Mary Sherrill.
I, I know I'm a little old to be a, I'm a grandparent of students, but I've had seven kids graduate from Princeton High School, they went through Sharonville, and now I have grandchildren in Evendale, and when I went to the music programs, I thought, boy, I wish that this school's getting better, I wish my kids could've had this. I said, they would've really blossomed. And you know, when I went to, I was a teacher before I had kids, and I always thought, it's a partnership between parents and teachers, and it's a partnership, a partnership between administrators, but as soon as I spoke up, they always didn't wanna listen. Dr. Denoyer, Dennis Peterson, Aaron Mackey, they always acted like I was some kind of enemy who was trying to shake up their world, but all I ever wanted was for my children to be lifelong learners. Now, I've seen this music teacher and man was I impressed, and I thought, man, this good, this is, she's really good. So then, I hear that she's gonna be gone, and I thought, darn, that's what they do to good teachers, they take a good teacher and they cut her in half and make two mediocre teachers, just mediocre, she'll be mediocre at Evendale, mediocre at Woodlawn. That's what they do. Sometimes I think at Princeton, they reward mediocrity better than excellence, because good teachers challenge administrators and they challenge parents, and I think, I think you would do a huge injustice to the district and to Evendale by getting rid of this teacher, because after seeing a lot of good teachers and a lot of not-so-good teachers throughout the whole Princeton, seven kids, a lot of teachers, some of them didn't even know my kid's name by the time they were finished, other ones touched their hearts. Well, you can't pay a teacher to care, this teacher cares, and if you punish her for caring, you've really done an injustice. So this old grandma got out of her old rocking chair and decided to speak, so thanks, and thanks for your service, 'cause I know Mrs. Wyder had all my kids, and Mrs. Wyder touched their lives, she wasn't, she cared, and she cares enough to be here now, and I thank you for your service, but please don't get rid of a really good, caring teacher, you can't cut a heart in half and send it to different schools, she's like the heart of Evendale, so please, think about it, and I don't want it to be dualistic, like sports, music, we're all in this together, we have to get a good education for all our kids. Thank you for listening.
Okay, the next person is Sandy Leach.
Hi, my name is Sandy Leach, I'm a Springdale resident, alumni, and a previous board member. I see you have an item on your agenda to approve a tax levy for operating expenses for the November ballot. I believe that most of the community will be surprised to hear that Princeton will have a tax levy on the ballot. I'm sure you know this is a terrible time to ask for more money from your community members, so it will be a challenge. Most taxpayers in the Princeton community are paying more in property taxes due to the reevaluations of their properties. I know you had nothing to do with that, but your constituents are bearing that burden, your residents are paying more for practically everything right now. Princeton residents have historically supported their schools, especially when they feel the district is being fiscally responsible. I'm hoping you have done your due diligence to make sure you have evaluated all your expenses to determine the necessity and the positive effect on raising student achievement. The request that you have, that you're considering approving this evening clearly states that this is for operating expenses. Generally, operating expenses cover the cost to operate the day-to-day activities of the school district, staff, educational tools, transportation, safety, upkeep, and maintenance of your facilities. As taxpayers consider whether they will vote yes or no, they should know that you are planning on spending twenty-two million dollars on athletic facility improvements from the general fund and you are considering those costs to be operating. If Princeton had an endless pot, or, yeah, I have seen the renderings and they're beautiful, but they're not necessary. If Princeton had an endless pot of money, all those items would be very nice to have. It concerns me that you believe all this is actually needed. I do believe there are some things that need to be done, but I think taxpayers should get to have a say as to whether they believe these items are necessary or not. By combining all of this in one levy, these, in one levy requests and calling it operating expenses, voters may not support your entire plan, therefore, voting no, which will negatively impact your actual operating revenue, which you say you need, so what happens if the levy fails? I've not heard great answers when I've asked those questions. I'm also concerned if you move forward with the athletic facility improvements and costs go up, you will be eating into your general funds and your operating expenses even further. I'm requesting the board seriously consider separating the non-maintenance athletic items so the community can have a say on what they feel is necessary and they're willing to pay for. Since the board approved a construction manager at your last board meeting for this project, prior to knowing whether you have the money for it, I am requesting prior to signing a contract that you make sure there are protections for the district from any financial obligation until the voters decide what they want. Thank you.
Okay, that was recognition of visitors, we're now moving to recognition, uh, Mr. Carr, do you wanna take the, uh, lead on that?
Yes, sir, thank you. Um, the board wishes to proclaim the following, whereas education is grand and powerful profession, worthy to be honored and respected, and whereas education is not limited to the classroom but occurs each time a student interacts with a staff member or a bus driver, and whereas excellence in education begins in the buses, classrooms, cafeterias, hallways, playgrounds, and offices of our nation's schools, district staff are among the educators who are charged with the responsibility of helping to shape the destiny of our country by teaching and guiding our children, youth, and adults, and whereas the district staff are and will continue to be dynamic force in the educational process, they have demonstrated through their sense of purpose and dedication and they are a major source of inspiration to our students, and whereas the staff of Princeton City School District has consistently documented their competence and commitment to students through their willingness to give their time, energy, talents, and ideas, they are to be praised for the progress our students are making, and whereas the goal of Teacher Appreciation Week and Staff Appreciation Week is to raise national and local awareness of teaching excellence and building a better society. Now therefore be it resolved that the Princeton City School District Board of Education wholeheartedly declares that as a country celebrates Teacher Appreciation Week as of May sixth through May tenth, twenty twenty-four, and they also declare May thirteenth through May seventeenth, twenty twenty-four as District Staff Appreciation Week, and urge all schools, centers, departments, parents, businesses, governmental and community agencies, and the entire community to participate in the celebration of the significant role district teachers and staff play in shaping the lives of our students and the future of our great nation. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have another recognition, Mr. Carr?
Yes, uh, Dr. Maxim will be up next.
All right, Princeton Elementary, Middle, and High School students competed Saturday, March second, twenty twenty-four, at the year-end scholastic chess tournament held at Lakota East High School, medals were given for individual results at the tournament and trophies awarded for performance at all the tournaments this year. In the K to eight, U eight hundred section, Nicolai Barenzi placed tenth in the state with four wins out of five possible. Solomon, we're calling him up one at a ti, okay, yeah, Nicolai, Nicolai Barenzi, come on up, yep. Solomon Roblero Perez placed eleventh with three point five wins out of five. All right. Their combined scores placed them fourth in the state for team scores for middle school students. Uh, Michael Diego Chopp placed seventh in the K to six unrated section. Amacio Brown Evenzo, Springdale Elementary School, fifth grade student, has competed with the middle school chess team for two years. At the scholastic chess tournament at Lakota East, Amacio placed second in the state of the K to five non-rated section. I'm excited, I can't wait to see you next year with us in the sixth grade, and of the hundred and seventy-seven total students competing, twenty students were from Princeton and we had the largest number of students compete in the chess, so congratulations. Oh, Amaco, thank you ma'am, Amaco, sorry. I'm looking forward to Amaco coming next year, I hope to see you guys. All right, the board wishes to honor Aldo Sanchez Romero for receiving the Extraordinary Student Award from the Lovis Foundation, a foundation who aims to spread joy by supporting initiatives and nonprofit partners for the undersupportive and under-recognized with a focus on disability communities, so, come on up here Aldo. Aldo was nominated by the award by Ms. Kathy Cook, who's our seventh grade, uh, social studies teacher, and Hope Squad leader, so, and here's what she said, "I am honored to write this nomination for Aldo Sanchez Romero, whom I've had the pleasure of knowing for the past academic year. As Aldo's Hope Squad advisor, I have witnessed firsthand his exceptional qualities that make him stand out among his peers. Aldo consistently demonstrates a positive attitude and approach to learning, his interactions with classmates are marked by respect, kindness, inclusivity. I have observed him going above and beyond to ensure that all students feel welcome and valued in the classroom. During his volunteer sessions in the special needs classrooms, Aldo shows thoughtfulness by selecting games that cater to each student's preferences and skills level, fostering a sense of community and camaraderie among his peers. One particular, one particular aspect of Aldo's character that impresses me is his natural leadership skills. He takes initiative in guiding group activities, addressing any challenges that may arise, and offering supports, support to his classmates without hesitation. Aldo's willingness to assist his peers, ask insightful questions, and create a supportive learning environment is truly commendable. So moreover, Aldo's involvement in the Hope Squad volunteer rotation schedule has been a valuable addition to our classroom dynamics. Um, his eagerness to engage with others and his genuine interest in helping others around him made him a positive impact on students and staff. Aldo's dedication to foster a culture of inclusivity and support is evident in every interaction in the learning community. In conclusion, I wholeheartedly recommend Aldo for the Lovis Extraordinary Student Award, his exemplary character, leadership abilities, and commitment to creating an inclusive environment make him a valuable asset to PCMS." grade student Claudia Simons for breaking the high jump record with a jump of five-one on May third, twenty twenty fourteen at the Milford Invitational, and second in the state with that as well, state runner-up, state runner-up, awesome. State runner-up, state runner-up, awesome.
All right, please hold for parent pictures. Thank you.
The board wishes to recognize Princeton Community Middle School 7th grade student Jayden Davis for breaking the boys' high jump record with a jump of 5'9" on April 29th, 2024, at the GMC Championship.
All right, and please hold for parent pictures, please hold for parent pictures, go back in place, please. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
All right, so we're going to recognize our PMC- or PCMS championship team coaches. The chess team, Larry Bowman, come on up. 7th grade cheer coach, Brianna Hardy. 8th grade cheer coach, Tyler McCullough. Oh, and then any of their students come on up here too as well? Any of the chess team come on up, come on up, guys?
And once again, hold for parent pictures, please, go back in place, hold for parent pictures. In three, two, one, thank you, everyone.
All right, we're going to recognize two teams right now. We're going to have the undefeated 7th and 8th grade football coaches come on up here. We're Donnie White, head coach, Ruben Feliciano, Dirk Thomas, Tom Cassidy, Gerald Bailey, Cody Carpenter, Dwayne Richardson, Jayden Simkins, trainer Mariah Hudson, and Coach Bop, get up there too. Get up there, Coach Bop, you're part of that. Any of the players from those two teams, 7th and 8th grade, student athletes, that represent that undefeated 7th and 8th grade teams. First time in our storied history that we have undefeated teams at the same time. So let's give it up for them.
Parent pictures, there you go. Thank you, everyone.
All right, next we're going to recognize our 8th grade girls' basketball coach. Head coach is James Martin, and then we got Coach Davis right here, Dee Davis. And then we have managers Malia Grimes and Saad Norton. And then I'd like to go ahead, any of the girls from the team come on up here. Now let me tell you about these girls, they're two-time GMC champions, so come on up, come on up. Two times, that's right, not just once, twice, so twice. And I'm going to give this group a shout-out. This season, it's not how you start the season, it's always how you end. And I was so proud how they came together to win their second one.
All right, and holding for the parent pictures. We have one more. Thank you, everyone.
That's it, that's what I said, back-to-back, yeah, that's back-to-back, 7th and 8th grade.
Good evening, I'm Kevin Jamison, Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources at Princeton School District, and I'd like to invite Dr. Deborah Jackson up to join me for this presentation. So Dr. Jackson and I work with all of our new teachers in the district under what's called the Ohio Department of Education's Resident Educator Program. It's a four-year program that's been reduced to a two-year program, but it embodies also the focus on mentoring for our new teachers as well as completion of the Resident Educator Summit of Assessment. So tonight, we'd like to recognize Brittany Habli. She can come on up. So Brittany joined us during our pandemic year. For many people who may remember back in the 2020-2021 school year, we were in a hybrid schedule. So she joined us in the middle of that school year as one of the first teachers to teach our English learners at the Innovation Center, and has done a great job in that role. I'm going to have Dr. Jackson talk a little bit about her project, which is a requirement of the fourth year of mentoring.
Thank you, Dr. Jamison. This is a part of the rest of the program that I absolutely love, because I love research and I love new people finding new things about the stuff that we do every day. Brittany's project looked at, in a critical, specific eye, looked at the work that was being done at the Princeton Innovation Center. And I do applaud you for your work, because she deconstructed it. She looked at the pluses, she looked at the minuses, but she offered some very, very strong improvements of what we can put in place to make that program look better. When considering the graduation rates, the challenges are many. It requires a significant amount of collaboration and a dynamic process to achieve the results, all while learning and planning for the future. A keen level of understanding into the experience of the English learner and a willingness to constantly react and learn obstacles describes what it takes to constantly help these students to succeed. I really enjoyed your work and had an opportunity to talk to Jamison, Doc- I'm sorry. We're good friends, I'm sorry, Dr. Jamison, about it. Because so often, as a new teacher, we fail, we really, we think it's not our place to look critically at the place that we are. We, you know, we go along to get along, because after all, we want that real contract. It took courage to do what you did, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening, it is my pleasure to call Dr. Kevin Jamison back up. We talked the last few meetings ago about Dr. Jamison was nominated for OABZ Educator of the Year. So the Board of Education wishes to recognize Dr. Kevin Jamison, Assistant Superintendent, Human Resource, Receiving the Outstanding Administrator of the Year. He won it, the Outstanding Administrator of the Year Award for the Ohio Alliance of Black School Educators, 24 Annual Banquet. We had a great time at that banquet, and I will say, and I say this anytime I can get the mic, I feel very, very lucky to have him on my team. I've known him for a while now, we both were in Princeton before, and I'm happy he's back, and I'm happy I'm back, and I'm happy that we have such a great team and couldn't do it without you, so thank you.
Okay, so I'm back. The board wishes to present Isaiah Dudley with the Dreamkeeper Award. So Isaiah, come on up. So I nominated Isaiah to receive recognition at the 2024 Ohio Alliance Black School Educators as part of my award that I received. And this Dreamkeeper Award is presented to Isaiah as he demonstrates what a Viking with true vision of what school spirit and community involvement should be. Isaiah Dudley, 11th grade student at Princeton High School, was recognized as an outstanding student by the Ohio Alliance of Black School Educators. Isaiah worked with myself on key projects related to our district health and safety goals and the district strategic plan, including awareness and education regarding the dangers of vaping. Isaiah also has been a leader in the Princeton Community Middle School and Princeton High School Hope Squads. Thanks to Isaiah's participation, PCMS served as a model school district for southwest Ohio in the area of suicide prevention. Much of this work became very crucial during the onset of the pandemic. Students from the school community saw Isaiah as a safe friend and an active leader of the Hope Squad. Isaiah was able to alert school staff regarding peers who were having emotional difficulty. He continues to work in close collaboration with school counselors and district administrators to stay aware of the needs of students at Princeton High School. As Isaiah has grown over the past few years, he's remained active in a number of areas associated with student leadership, academics and athletics, including student council president and member, Hope Squad basketball manager, cheer captain volleyball DECA, Planning Committee for Princeton High School's annual Black History Program, acapella choir, school plays and musicals, Cincinnati Black Theater Company Productions, founder of the business and business owner of Wax and Wicks. Isaiah exemplifies a true reflection of what it means to have school spirit and to care deeply about the school community. It is our expectation at Princeton that Isaiah will continue to contribute to the various committees and will serve as a model for what it means to have joy, be caring, and continually uplift others around him.
And please hold for parent pics. And thank you. We'd like Ms. Lynette Brown to come forward. Mrs. Brown's a 5th grade teacher at Glendale Elementary. She has been chosen as the 2024 Adopt a Class Teacher of the Year. We will be down at the Duke Energy Center Wednesday morning to celebrate her and others, so we congratulate you, Ms. Lynette. I've known her for quite a while, and she's been a staple at Princeton, and we appreciate you, thank you.
Yep, Tiny's going to help you. Good evening, the board would like to recognize those staff members who were voted by their building peers to receive the Viking Excellence Awards for the 2023-2024 school year. Viking Excellence Awards for certified and support staff members are given at each building. The recipients for the 23-24 school year are, from Evendale, Allison Kroski, and from, and Nicole Federally. From Glendale, Adele Zuckerman and Erica Pritchett. From Heritage Hill, Lindsay Young and Christina Park. From Lincoln Heights, Angela Poe and Cassidy Burr. From Sharonville, Bernadette Asbrock and Fay Wolfensberger. From Springdale, Laura Condo and Sue Brockman. From Stewart, Stacy Young, Autumn Ayers, and Emily Hackett. From Woodlawn, Catherine Byrne Sanders and Alice Sylvester. Princeton Community Middle School, Kristen Brown and Janine Clark. From Princeton High School, Julie Schmidt and Vicky Loffland. From the Innovation Center, Eleanor Kilby and Tiffany Tinsley. And from Central Office, Kathy DePeel.
All right, and continue to hold. And we're done in three, two, one, thank you, everyone.
The Board of Education would like to honor those staff members retiring during the 23-24 school year. In effort of time, I'm just going to read the people that are here and checked in tonight. But we will be featuring all of our retirees on social media, so please be on the lookouts and give them your congratulations on social media. Tonight, we are recognizing Judy Boyle Ricker. Debbie Fusen. Catherine Burns Sanders. Kelly Kessler. And Becky Heckman. I miss anyone that's here else this year? I don't think I got it.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you for hearing me out. Sorry.
Okay, we had a, an addition to the recognition of visitors. You have three minutes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You have the timekeeper.
Don't worry, I won't speak long.
This is Jackie Rice.
I dreaded this all day, so thank you for hearing me out, so it was not gone wasted. I'll make this short. I am a Princeton graduate. I know firsthand the benefits of music education and what a passionate, energetic teacher can do for these children. I once was a super awkward emotional mess until the 4th grade, when I had a wonderful teacher, Mrs. Wyder. And at this time, children were also able to choose an instrument, in which I chose the violin. As a six child of seven kids in a lot of our district in some sort of poverty, do you think we have that kind of opportunities on a regular basis? In addition, last year, my daughter developed a sensory disorder in the bigger, beginning of 2nd grade. In attempts to be good, sit still, be quiet, she started sucking on a strand of her hair, until by the end of the year, 75% of her hair was gone. Over the summer, she curbed the habit, and her hair started to grow back. The OT and PCP warned us it wasn't a permanent fix, that there will be constant trials with this, especially as she's getting older. State testing, sports, friends, et cetera. So, we thought, oh, great, here she goes into the 3rd grade. And then she had the opportunity to enjoy, to join ensemble and leadership, which surprisingly, this shy, quiet child with half of her hair gone, joined without any doubt. My husband and I questioned it, can she handle this much tension and pressure? The answer was yes. She stands tall with a newfound confidence and is happy. She has not reverted back to the old habit anymore. She has a head full of hair. She plays instruments and sings songs with children that once called her gross. In turn, you see her helping kids with special needs on the stage. Princeton is a beautiful place, known for its diversity and inclusion. Without loving teachers like Ms. Kroski and the opportunities to allow for it, it is very hard to find common ground that allows these things to grow. Without my time in orchestra and softball, there was no way I would be able to connect with the kids that I did. Please reconsider your decision. People are catching on that Princeton is the right place to be, and some of us always have known. And these kind of extracurriculars really help the kids and their mental health, but also truly showcase what Vikings are all about. Thank you.
Okay. If anyone wants to depart before we get into our own business meeting, you can, or you can stay. You're welcome to stay. Okay, we're moving to our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, Ms. Pedder.
Mrs. Wyder?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
Mrs. Kessler?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving to district business, item four. Approval of the 24, April 24 financial report. Have a motion.
I move to approve the April 2024 financial report as presented.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, Ms. Pedder.
I don't have a lot, since I'm going to talk forever in a little bit about the forecast, but you have all your standard reports in here. Everything progressing along, your 2018 report, reporting all the expenditures and revenues received, your pandemic ESER funding report, again, left with just ESER 3. We're closing in on the final time to encumber those funds, and your April report, which I will talk more about that in detail when we go over the forecast.
Any other questions?
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
Mrs. Kessler?
Yes.
Mrs. Wyder?
Yes.
Motion passes. Approval of amended appropriation resolution, that's part B. Do we have a motion? For part B.
On behalf of the Treasurer, I move to approve the amended appropriation resolution.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, Ms. Pedder.
Attached in your report is the three increases. This is appropriation, the budget, the expense side. We have an increase in our bond fund to cover a booking entry we're required to make from our audit last year. We have an additional $40,000 in pre-K expenses, and then our medical claims are, have been running ahead this year, so adding another $1 million into that expense to cover April, May, and June. So, that's the increases to the appropriation.
Okay. Roll.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
Mrs. Kessler?
Yes.
Mrs. Wyder?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Approval of the five-year forecast.
I move to approve the five-year forecast as presented.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Ms. Pedder.
You have two reports in front of you. And Mr. Lockhart's throwing up the slides. The slides are the horizontal version report here. This is the actual forecast, the spreadsheet version that we submit to the state, and then this whole report together is known as the notes. I'll submit both of those tomorrow, and we'll slide through the forecast update for May. I'm using some different graphics. The tool has really grown, and we've really evolved, and I really am thinking there's a lot of value in some of these other graphics where you're going to see tonight. So, the first couple talk about this year, this current fiscal year, fiscal year '24, and where we're projecting to stand in the next six weeks, all right? So, you can see what revenues we brought in, $92 million this year, what we are projecting on spending out, $93 million, almost $94 million. And so, you can see, we're spending more than we're currently bringing in. Again, we've been talking about, we're at the end of this levy cycle. This is what is to be expected. So, not a big surprise here. On the next slide, we show the pie chart, and this is a chart, we used to have kind of a very busy chart that was bar chart. So, we've got a nice little pie chart, and we're grouping in our expenses. We're showing our local taxes, which is our real estate, and our public utility. You can see that's $62 million. Then we have the grouping of our state funding. So, whether it's restricted or unrestricted, that's the money that comes from the fair school funding formula. And then that third line, they have, they've changed the name on that, and this is where homestead rollback dollars are. So, these are the reimbursement areas, plus our tangible personal property tax. So, they wanted this all lumped under state funding, and you know, we're going to always fight about that TPP and being ours, but now it's included under the reimbursements. And just to let you know, of that $9.7 million, 6.7 is TPP. So, we're watching that decrease by $922,000 per fiscal year. So, that's the phase out. And the other revenue is a smaller area, probably the largest area right now in that is we're, we're probably at $2 million in interest income this year. Again, that's a positive of the situation. Money is making money, borrowing money costs more, and we also, we used to have a lot of border revisions in there and TIF money. We still have the TIF money for all the TIFs we have in place, but you know, we really can't challenge many border revisions now without the board approving it, and it's just become more challenging. So, that's how our revenue looks. And on the next page are the assumptions. I think we've been talking about, there's no big, no big shakeups here, except for the final bullet. So, I do want to remind you, our property tax revenue, real estate revenue was, you're going to actually, when you look at the spreadsheet, you'll see it actually decreased from 23 to 24. But we had this big reappraisal, and it's costing us so much more money. Well, we are not a 20 mil floor district. So, while some of the pieces on the chessboard have changed, some people may be paying more, other people are paying less. So, that's how it's coming out kind of even for Princeton, because whenever we vote for an operating levy, we vote for a millage, and they tell us how much that millage earns at that time. The only growth is in new construction. We did not have a lot of new construction. I thought we were going to have more. That's where my forecast numbers came in a little short. We didn't have as much construction as we had seen trend-wise historically. So, that's, that's kind of the explanation of why we didn't see a giant growth in our real estate revenue. Public utilities, we saw a big increase on. Now, some of you remember, we saw that historically once before. We saw a big increase in this utility, and then the very next year, we saw a decrease because they can appeal to the state, and we don't get to come to the table. So, we're going to hold our breath next year and see what happens. Hopefully, that money stays in place. It's a nice little chunk of change. It was over a million dollars increase in PUP, so that certainly does help our bottom line. State funding, remember, we're in years 3 and 4 of the new fair school funding formula. We are at 50% in the phase in, 66% next year. Those are in law, and those are in the forecast. We have one more biennial budget to get through, and we will have a fully phased-in formula. Critical, critical, critical for school funding, that we get that. I have that in the forecast. Everybody is still feeling very positive about that becoming a fully funded formula. I will leave it in until I start hearing otherwise. And then the other bullet is, is the five-year levy, which we do have on the board agenda tonight, and that would increase our revenue. Pie chart, same thing for expenditures, the pie chart grouping our expenses together. We all know that personnel is where we spend a lot of our money in districts. You certainly can see this very clearly on this chart. I really like this chart, tells the story. Princeton, remember, and a lot of school districts also purchase services, a lot of people in there. Princeton, our bus drivers, our substitutes, and a lot of contracted staff also. Supplies, then you have this other category, supplies, capital, debt, other, that's that small pie chart there. That has, in this forecast, the payment on a $22 million project. That is in here. Your expense assumptions are listed on the other sheet. Just a little bit of recapping on the ESER. Remember, we supplanted two years. That means we took salaries and benefits that we had been paying for fiscal years '21 and prior, we moved those temporarily, two years into the grant. That provided savings to the district. And last, or this year, fiscal '24 was the first year we brought those back in. Key, key point is, we have a three-year negotiated agreement with both of our unions for those base increases. Those are in the forecast. In the final two years, there's a 0% in the outbursts. That's traditionally what Princeton has done, that we have not forecasted base increases when we don't have a negotiated agreement in place. Of course, we can always change that. We did add some positions this fiscal year that we had added with ESER funding. That was in here in November, it's in here now. And again, we keep reminding everyone at this point, there are no other ESER funds, positions, programs, or anything in this forecast. We're going to have to see how that rolls over the summer. We may have a communication, we, of course, will work with the board, we will update the forecast as needed. We have, if you compare fiscal year '23 to '24, you're going to see an increase in purchased services. We have seen a lot of increase in costs for those areas, nursing, translation, we had to add the athletic trainer into the forecast this year, counseling, and all kinds of special ed services. Nursing, translation, we had to add the athletic trainer into the forecast this year, counseling, and all kinds of special ed services. Just the team knows, we talk about it all the time, just make sure we're providing what the law requires us to provide in these areas. And, and, and we have paid bills. This year, we also added the capital outlay plan, first time in this May forecast. We have five and ten-year numbers. We feel really good about the five-year numbers, we'll keep adding that year on. But we have a good plan in place, that is in this forecast also. And there's no base increase again. But those are the expense assumptions for this forecast. Now we get to some of the, the really cool charts, I think that really show a great story here. Here's this projected revenue versus expenditures where you can see, back in twenty-three, we were bringing in more revenue than we were spending. Now we are going into the deficit spending, spending more money than we're bringing in. Typical levy cycle. And then you see the projected cash balance and the associated chart. This, this cash balance includes the passage of a five mil levy. So all these things, of course, forecasts are fluid depending on what happens, we're making assumptions. And we'll move forward. Remember, last meeting I did talk to you about, I ran all the numbers with no levy and with no capital plan, building plan. And we still have, at the end of the fifth year, we only had seven hundred ninety thousand dollars. So we've been talking about this for, for a couple of years now, how we are moving into the end of that levy cycle and that we would soon have to add. The next chart, the true, the cash on hand, this one is actually a chart that does not show the levy in it. So you can see that we would have minus twenty-seven days of, of cash, operating cash in the fifth year of the forecast. I think that's a good visual to have. The next couple of charts are just some great things. So you can see some data around our enrollment, historical and projected. We had a nice little increase this year. Is it an anomaly, is it trend? We'll have to wait and see. Other than that, we've got a projection of thirty-five new students per year in the forecast. So that is important for us. Funding is based on the number of students that are educated and living in, are schooled in our district, not living in, just living in our district. The chart, next chart shows per pupil expenditure, historical and projected. See those numbers trending up? And then the daily cost to educate. The tool produces this, this is what shows our taxpayers what value they get for their money. So it's saying ninety-three dollars a day to educate a student. Most people think that's, that's a pretty good deal for what we provide at Princeton, so. And then it shows a breakout of how much the actual resident is paying versus all the other sources together. So, so another great piece of data that we'll be able to use. Then I couldn't resist the chart we've been using for years and years and years, just in case someone really wanted to see it. So it shows in the blue, the levy, if it would pass, what revenue it would generate. I think, you know, the story here is that a five mil levy passing still does not get us out of deficit spending. We're going to have, we're going to have to do some work. We're going to have to tighten our belts a little bit to see if we can get maybe a year or two out of deficit spending. But that's, that is our financial picture. You know, I, it's not, it's not fantastic by any means, but again, we are becoming a levy district. I don't see any other source of revenue. I, I don't, I don't think, there's no way TPP is going to be saved. There are just so few districts, it doesn't have any political clout behind it. The pandemic really helped us, remember, in nineteen when we passed, we said we'd be back in three years. We received a lot of pandemic funding. It did, it pushed us down, pushed us back two years. So it's, it's time to make hard decisions, so. Questions?
How many positions did the ESAR funding cover? And how many cuts did we have to make because of it?
I, I can't give you the exact number on ESAR positions. Maybe Kevin knows exactly as far as cutting. You can come on out. You know, I, I think everybody has been moved into general fund through attrition.
So if you could repeat the question, I want to make sure I answer it correctly.
How many ESAR positions?
How many ESAR positions? So at the beginning of the school year, there were four administrator positions, eight PSSA positions, fourteen PACE positions, and five non-bargaining positions. All of the PACE positions, through attrition this year by way of resignations or retirements or mid-year departures, have been saved by moving those ESAR-funded roles into the general fund for those people who vacated those general fund positions. The same holds true for the PSSA positions, those A positions by way of attrition, resignation either mid-year or end-of-year have been saved as well. The administrator positions were not renewed going into this school year, I believe, by way of retirement in one case. And then resignations, those positions were not replaced. And then in addition to that, we have five non-bargaining positions. And then there was a technology position that falls into the non-bargaining category that was also not filled. So six total, really. And then one of those positions were saved by way of moving that position into Title III because it targets specifically English learners. The other positions, as had been explained, were basically informed that those positions were ESAR-funded upon hire. And so we had those conversations myself and Mr. Card in January to let them know at the end of the school year that the positions would come to an end.
So how many of those positions, like for example, you knew we had the ESAR funds. How many people were we able to hire with the ESAR funds? And we honestly told them, when the ESAR funds run out, you're out of here.
Yeah.
Was that like, you're talking, it's the same number that you're talking about now?
The five people? Yes, yes. I'm happy to report, I believe, almost all of them have found positions elsewhere.
That's good news.
Yes. So that brings us now to no ESAR-funded positions that are carrying over into next school year.
That's good. Thank you.
And I would say I appreciate Dr. Jameson working with me and the team to be able to do that. It's not an easy thing, but it's something that needs to be done. So appreciate the team and Dr. Jameson for working with me on that.
I just wondered if we're personnel top-heavy in light of the fact that we have a levy that we've been trying to talk about for the last two years. I've been trying to talk about it. I was told the L-word, we shouldn't talk about it right now. But now we can talk about it. Couldn't last year. But it's just interesting and I just hope we do what's right for the voters and the citizens.
Any other comments? Ms. Pedder?
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
Mrs. Kessler?
Yes.
Mrs. Wyder?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, approval of an agreement with LexisNexis for school year twenty-four, twenty-five. Have a motion for that.
I move to approve the agreement with LexisNexis for school year twenty, twenty-four through twenty-twenty-five as presented.
Second, there a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Card?
This is an agreement, a renewal to database and registry access attendance. Officers use to look at related to residency, attendance, and enrollment. Very important, it's been very helpful, what I understand, in helping with our chronic absenteeism, which continues to improve. So there's something that our folks use and has been very beneficial in that, in that area.
Isn't absenteeism part of our report card coming up?
Yes, sir.
So this will help with that?
That will help, it has helped. As we've seen from the year, last year to this year so far, we're not there yet, but it's, it's getting better. So we, we, is that definitely been beneficial?
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Ms. Pedder?
Mrs. Kessler?
Yes.
Mrs. Wyder?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
I abstain, I, I currently do some contract work with them, with Lexis.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
Motion approved. Motion for the three-year MOU with Sidearm Sports ESP Media.
I move to approve the three-year MOU with Sidearm Sports ESP Media as presented.
Second. Mr. Card?
Yes, this, this is part of our athletic website, they did some work with us on that, been beneficial. So the three-year agreement helps us save some money there, it's a little cheaper to do it that way. So that's why we, we're doing it that way. And it comes out of the athletic general fund.
Is that how we order spiritware off that website?
I'll be honest, I don't have that answer, so, yes.
Is that widely known?
I think they say-
Or should it be widely known?
I don't know if they know it comes here, but they know, I mean, it's on our website, it's pretty easy to find on our website. Because I've worked on some stuff for a few folks.
Okay. Any other questions, concern, Ms. Pedder?
Mrs. Wyder?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
Mrs. Kessler?
Yes.
Motion approved. F, approval of proposals from Garland regarding roofing services, we need a motion.
I move to approve the proposals from Garland for roofing services at Evendale, Heritage Hill, and Lincoln Heights Elementary Schools as presented.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. I'm going to say, Mr. Card?
As we said, just the three flat roofs at Evendale, Heritage Hill, and Lincoln Heights, that is identified in the ten-year capital plan that Mrs. Pedder mentioned, will provide, you know, twenty, thirty years of life, much less expensive than a complete overhaul. So feel pretty confident there. Funding for the project comes out of the capital funds.
Capital funds or general funds?
Capital plan in the general fund.
Okay, there you go.
All right, all right, all right. Just making sure.
Vote. The difference, vote.
Now you said flat roof.
Yes.
Other than Glendale, who has a non-flat roof?
Those three right there.
No, they don't?
Yeah, they do, that's what we're-
So I'm saying, other than Glendale, which schools?
One of the buildings?
Yeah. Everything else is flat, isn't it?
So your question was, what other buildings have flat roofs?
No.
Okay.
Other than Glendale. Who else does not have a, a flat roof?
I think they all have flat roofs, I believe you're right.
Okay.
Yeah. I think all of them have some form of a flat roof somewhere on the building, yes.
Okay.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just because you put that in the description, I wanted to make sure people didn't think we had-
Yeah, I haven't been up on the roof, so I, I, that's why, that, that the guy who's up there handle that. He knows. I don't want to go up there either.
All right, all right. Ms. Pedder?
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
Mrs. Kessler?
Yes.
Mrs. Wyder?
Yes.
Approved. Proposal approved. G, approval of resolution declaring the necessity of a levy for operating expenses to be voted in November twenty-twenty-four. Their motion.
I move to approve the resolution declaring the necessity of levying an additional tax for current operating expenses to be voted on in November two thousand twenty-four as presented.
There a second?
Second.
Motion properly moved and seconded. Mr. Card?
As we listened to Ms. Pedder and her forecast, kind of, she, she kind of took my thunder on all the things I was going to say. As you know, we had a levy pass in nineteen, Princeton did, with the understanding we'd be back in twenty-two. The ESAR money that came in allowed us to extend that two years. We do have to make sure that we, we have, you know, we have policies as we have to stay, stay within compliance. So looking at the forecasts, there's a need here.
Copy. Any other comments?
How much, would, would this cost the average homeowner?
As soon as we do this resolution, it heads to the county. The county puts all those numbers in place, they'll tell us how many, five mils equals this amount of money. And then we'll have those other numbers too. That will all be provided to you prior to the second resolution that you must pass to actually get the issue on the ballot.
And that's for all counties everywhere?
Yes.
Yes.
We will file in all three counties.
Any other questions? Not Ms. Pedder?
Mrs. Moore?
Yeah.
Yes? Was that a?
It wasn't a no, so it was a reluctant yes.
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
Mrs. Kessler?
Yes.
Mrs. Wyder?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
The approval has passed. Okay. We're going on to section five, discussion, which is the academic update.
Okay, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I am here to, to talk a little bit about, for our CIA team on behalf of the Curriculum Instruction Assessment Team. And we have some outstanding people here that are going to help me tonight with this presentation. So we have been discussing cooperative learning strategies in all of our schools over the past three years. One of the reasons we've been discussing that is because we have to increase student engagement. One of the big pushes with the state of Ohio is that student talk should exceed teacher talk. And so instead of me standing up here talking a long time, I'm going to do a couple of slides and then I'm going to let the practitioners talk to you about how cooperative learning has been impacting their class. So a lot of people that have been in district leadership team meetings with me or have been in any meetings with me know that I have this love of data. And if it's evidence-based and I think it's going to work to drive instruction, then I want to learn a little bit more about it. And therefore, that's why we went with cooperative learning. And we know that that has an effect size, which means we know that that is going to be in the blue, which is going to have a desired effect of increasing student achievement. And again, that is making sure that your students are talking more than your teacher, that they're engaging in what they're learning and that they're active participants. So that is the research behind it. We have done several trainings over the years. And one of the most important pieces is that our educators, we brought educators in, teachers, administrators, coaches. And we all sat and we said, do we want to learn more about cooperative learning? They all said yes. So over these years, we have had a series of meetings in professional learning, some in the summers where people have committed their summer. And so these are just some of the feedback that people gave in writing. But again, I thought it'd be better for you to hear it from the practitioners for who is, what they are doing day-to-day in the classrooms to have this come to life and to help our students. So if we could have all of you guys just come on up, they have a couple of things they want to say. Mr. Lonnie Douche, Mr. Dave Martin, Mr. Kyle Jepson, Dr. Maxim, Mrs. Rachel Merritt, and Mrs. Doris.
I was lucky enough to be trained, get Kagan training this past year as part of the district leadership team. I will certainly say that I think most of us in the classroom have seen an increase in, over the last few years, I'll say social awkwardness, if not social isolation among our students. We're seeing it much, I'm seeing it much more commonly that students are happier on their cell phones, with their headphones on, with their hoods up, effectively hiding from the rest of their classmates, the rest of the world. They walk through the halls, the halls are quieter, not necessarily because they're more friendly, but because they simply are not engaging with each other quite often, much less engaging with the staff. We're seeing that in the classroom, I am, in that if I ask the students to work together without any sort of structure, they're happy to sit quietly next to each other and work alone. If I ask for engagement on a whole-class basis, it is much more of a struggle than I have ever seen in my career before this. The Kagan structures for cooperative learning provide a really nice way, and an effective way, to build class, class cooperation, to get the students these social skills that I'll readily admit I find incredibly awkward to teach in isolation from curriculum. If I'm teaching chemistry and along the way, we're working as groups, that I can do. But if we suddenly say, today we're not going to teach curriculum, we are instead going to do social skills, that feels inauthentic and honestly falls flat most of the time. I appreciate that the Kagan structures really incorporate that into curricular learning at the same time. The one fear I do have at the, the most recent training that we had, they stated very flatly, if we present this, if we let people practice it, and then we stop, ten percent of them will likely adopt it. It'll die. If instead we set aside some sort of method which Kagan, the Kagan Cooperative Learning Program has to have constant coaching of our staff to do this, it has a chance of succeeding. I hope that if we are going down this route, and I think it's a good route, I hope that we engage in that as well, the coaching part. Thank you.
Middle school students love cooperative learning strategies. Middle school students don't like anything. Thank you very much. Just kidding. It's, it's rare that you have a body of research that spans about fifty years that is consistently proven that cooperative learning strategies and structures work and are effective, particularly Kagan cooperative learning. It's unusual that structures are universally usable K to higher education and into the adult professional development world. It is tried and it is true. Students, when, when structures are used appropriately with team building, class building, and academically, it is, they, they love it. They engage in learning. Teachers love it. It's pedagogically sound. Tanya Westwright referred to Hattie's effective strategies and the coefficient. It's really rare in education that you have long-term cross-categorical meta metadata that synthesizes pedagogical strategies over a very wide swath of a body of research over forty solid years. So it's true, it's sound, it's, it's foolproof. It just has to be followed through with fidelity. I'm a big fan of it. I have been since I started in teacher education in the early nineties, so yeah.
Hi, Kyle Jepson, Principal Innovation Center. If you've been following trends in education, I know a lot of you do, you know that student engagement, truancy, it's already come up here in this meeting, and students' willingness to participate are all at critically low levels in education. This is true across American education. This is true in Princeton, and this is especially true at the Princeton Innovation Center. A primary reason for that, among others, is a lack of connection, social connection with peers. We see students more isolated, as Lonnie said, feeling more isolated, lack of connection, and also a lack of interest and purpose in the classes that they're taking. What we've seen with the Kagan strategies, we've had a couple of classrooms adopted, is students that are more engaged because they have a natural structure in which to engage, in which curriculum, in which assignments can be tied directly to their interests. Within these couple of classes, when we started rolling this out earlier this year, there were definitely some growing pains. There were some students who were resistant. There were students who did not want to engage, did not want to participate. But what we found over time, as we were persistent, is that more and more students were interested. And now, we see not just when the, the Kagan strategies or when the cooperative learning strategies are being implemented, but throughout the entirety of the class in these classrooms, we see increased engagement. We see students with higher levels of participation and a willingness to engage with one another, a less likelihood that they're going to disengage, or want to, want to take out their phones, or just disconnect from the class. So, you know, this has been big for us. What I really appreciate about the Kagan strategies is it provides a structures, a structure for our teachers who maybe don't have that, or haven't been naturally taught that. It's something that we, that I model at my staff meetings as well, for the staff members who haven't gone through the training, to help them see that. Everything's laid out very clearly and how to do it. The expectations are there. But the strategies provide that structure to help teachers move into that space where they can then easily implement this. And I'm hoping that as we adopt this more and more throughout the building, there's a higher level of expectation among students and that they, you know, this won't just be this class here, this class here, but throughout the entire building, we'll see higher levels of engagement. Thank you.
All right. One of the things I want to focus on is cooperative learning versus like group work. One of the things that makes cooperative learning and Kagan different is the positive interdependence that the group members have to have. They rely on each other for answers and to come up with solutions. So that, that's an important thing, I think, that needs to be stated. The other thing I want to state is that I believe that with the whole district doing this, and at the elementary schools, with them doing the structures, I think if we continue to do this, we will norm it, so the behavior will be the expectation across K to twelve, not just here. So I think what the high school will see is that, hey, the middle school, you know, we've been building on this, and then everybody builds on it, and then it becomes the expectation. So what I'm hoping is that we can stick with this, and I, I'm just going to be honest with you. I don't want it to be one of those trends that just goes and then comes and then goes in education and cycles. It's definitely something that will, that will make a difference. One of the things I will mention is, we do this with our staff through BLT cooperative learning, and I've never got so many compliments from building leaders as, when we do the cooperative learning. Because as you know, when you get in a BLT situation with, with, with leaders, everybody likes to dominate the conversation. So really, even with the adults in those meetings having that, they definitely feel like their voices are heard. So that's why I stayed here and want to continue to push for cooperative learning.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
You heard from the big people, now let's talk about the little people here at elementary. So since incorporating cooperative learning in our classroom, we, of course, as you've heard, seen an increase in student engagement. That's great. However, my favorite thing is that I've noticed a shift in classroom dynamics. It has gone from one person raising their hand, being the most important person in the room, to all of a sudden, everybody's important. Everybody has a voice. I loved, kind of my buy-in was when we were talking, and somebody said, no, you have to tell me what you think now. And I was like, oh, this is a great moment. You know what I mean? They want to hear what each other has to say, and their opinion matters and they have value. The stats, you know, it sets the stage for them not only to learn from me, but they're willing now to listen to other people. So it's been great.
Hi, Miss Moore.
Hey.
I always have to say hello to you. I'm Vanessa Doris, teacher at Woodland. I'd like to say that one of the things that has really made me want to continue doing the Kagan is that I see buy-in from the students. They're asking for the structures. They're like, can we do this one? Can we do that one? Even when it comes to our brain breaks, I've incorporated some of the structures into SFA reading program, and it's just taken off. I've seen the structures being added to math, added to science. I've seen improvement in test scores for whether it be just a short-cycle assessment, whether it be unit assessment. I have all students buying it, even some of my students who are extremely shy. They're leading the discussions, and everybody's voice is heard. I don't think that I would be involved in this as it wasn't something that I believed in, because I don't have much longer to do this. I'm just letting you know. So I'm really excited about this new initiative that we're taking. And I've seen so much growth with my students, and they're really wanting to be a part of school and come, and they're asking to do certain things, but they want to be a part of school. And I'm not having much problem with attendance, because they want to come and do these activities. They want to buy into it. So it's been wonderful.
So we're going to close up. I just want to thank them all for being here, and I just want everyone to know that this is truly how we make decisions. These are the people that if we have something going on, and we need to write a strategic plan, we need to write a one-plan, I'm always asking for the people that are out there doing the work day-to-day. And so I thank you guys so much for being here for our longest board meeting in a long time. But you held on with us, and if we could give them a round of applause. Thank you all very much. And we will be in touch with our next steps. We hope that the cooperative learning plans will be in our upcoming strategic plan, but that's all still being written. But again, thank you all for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that was the academic update. Kagan strategies. Now for part six, the reports. Trezor's report.
Two more items I wanted to just make the board aware of. We had a benefit committee meeting since the previous meeting. We have started talking about the what-ifs. The last two years, we have been over the seven percent increase requirement that has been in the negotiated agreements. We've been able to adjust. At that time, very, very small percentages. We have seen, as you're seeing, the increase in the claims appropriation. We are seeing claims dollars increase. UMR continues to tell us that as contracts they have in place end, the next contracts will be catching up with the increases in medical costs that we're seeing all over. People delayed treatment, they're seeking treatment, costs that hospitals and physicians' offices have experienced because of lack of employees and having to pay higher costs. We will start seeing that in our next contracts that are negotiated. So we are preparing, we're looking ahead. Our consultant is to bring suggestions to us in case we get to August, September, when we're trying to rate-set, and we have to make changes to the plan. So we are working towards that, and hopefully, hopefully, things will get better. It's not been a good start to twenty-four. Public records training for me is tomorrow. That covers the board members that were elected in November. If anyone wants to come experience three and a half hours of fun, I'll be on a webinar tomorrow here.
I thoroughly enjoy that training. And if I had advanced notice, I would have been.
You can sign up online.
Let me know. Oh, you mean, there's another class besides tomorrow?
Oh, they have them, I think, monthly.
Oh, cool. We'll talk.
I have done it so many times, it's, it's three and a half hours of my life.
Bet you'll never get that.
At least it's virtual, a virtual option. So we'll get that done for you, and then we'll be,
Thank you.
we'll have you all covered again for another period of time.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Mr. Card?
Well, first of all, I'd like to say, congratulations, everybody. Isn't it great? We have a little longer meeting we've had, but we're honoring a lot of people, our staff, our kids. We have kids doing, and staff doing great things, so, you know, that is something that we, we love to celebrate. I do want to run through a few important dates this week for everybody, and then a few other things. I'll be as quick as possible. We've been doing our years of celebration at the school, so today we did Woodland, tomorrow Lincoln Heights. Tonight was Princeton Underclassmen Awards, so that was at six tonight. Senior Awards are tomorrow night at six in Matthews, which, which is always a great night. And then years of celebration, Wednesday at the high school at two fifteen. We have a spring signing day for our athletes at that point. And speaking of signing days, at the breakfast last week, we did our workforce and our military signing. We had a lot of people get to see that, so that was pretty neat. I had a lot of great feedback from people at the breakfast, how they really liked that. So I think, Ms. Roddy and I talked, I think that's something we continue to do at our last one, to get our kids more people. Because, you know, we have them every year, but just, you know, not as many people are there now. We had business people, we had other staff, and it was really a nice event, so we liked that. Then also Wednesday, Princeton Top Twenty, Top Twenty event, it's at six in Matthews, and the Scarlet Oaks graduation at NKU's, their arena is at six-thirty. Another years of service will be at seven-twenty at the middle school Thursday. And then there's an orchestra, orchestra that night. So just a lot of things. And Springdale Talent Show Friday, and then some musical things next week, and we, we'll get a look at that. One thing we're able to do today, we had a couple of, Isaiah, you met her, and another young lady. This is, May is National Youth Traffic Safety Month, and we did the clicker ticket thing at Jake Sweeney today. A lot of law enforcement there. We were there with the teacher, Ms. Roddy, and myself. Really, our, our students did well. So they will be, they got interviewed on Channel Five and Nine, so I think I was hearing probably when we were here. So if we can get a clip of that, if it did, and we'll get that out to you. But they did a really good job representing us, and I was very proud of them for that. And we have a lot of athletic things going on that happened this weekend. We're going to honor those folks later, so I'm not going to get into all that, because we're going to honor them. And then one great thing with our Princeton Community Middle School Zero Bell Concert Band, they come in at seven, a little early to do that. Best overall middle school band in Class A, and first-place winners at Kings Island this weekend, out of eight schools. Ours was the best. So we want to celebrate them as well. And then Friday, we're at the Business Partner, Business Breakfast, Hamilton County Educational Service Center Business Advisory Council. Gave us a big banner and, and some things to put up. A special appreciation to us, commitment and collaboration between educators and business leaders. It was a really, a nice event celebrating those folks. So Ms. Key and, and the people she works with do a really good job of that, and I was excited to be there. I know she, she's really involved in that. They've asked me to get involved a little deeper, and I told her, we'll, we'll talk. I don't want to bury myself too thin, but I really think it's important, so it's something I might jump into to be the administrative person on that, that levy. Couple other things. I was able to go speak to the Rotary last Tuesday, I believe it was. So we had a great thing, and I think, you know, I just got to go brag on Princeton and all the great things. And they really liked what we're doing. They felt like they were doing a good job, some of the things, a lot of positive comments. A lot of positive comments from them about some of my staff here, and some of our teachers they've worked with, how friendly they are, how their co-op-learners they are, how they care about the kids. So I came back and told them that, and I told a specific teacher that as well. So that was kind of a, a neat thing to get to do my first time at the Rotary, to do that. So didn't know what to expect, but had a great time, so.
Thank you, Mr. Card.
I have a question. The baccalaureate, that's further down the road, right?
I sent you an email today. The baccalaureate's not happening this year. There was not enough student interest. So what we're going to need to do, and we talked about this already, was we are going to, it's supposed to be Friday night. We are going to figure that out for next year. I know, I think, I didn't get to send you guys an email today, because I got to leave for, for an appointment with my daughter, but I think we've done it twenty-seven out of the sixty-six years we've been here, but it's just a great event. We want to do it. Just, it wasn't, you know, it's kid-led, and kids didn't jump up, so we need to maybe do some things to help them.
Yeah, I'd love to help out. We need to volunteer.
Okay, appreciate it.
Is that it?
Is this it?
I do wanted to, I, I just have to say, last week, I think it was, my days are running together, but had the opportunity to go to the Board Leadership Institute, who had asked us to present on the Parent Academy. And Anna Martinez and Kelly Perrin came up to Columbus to help present and did an amazing, I mean, an amazing job. I just have to say that publicly. They truly made Princeton proud in terms of sharing the Parent Academy and all the things that it's doing. I also have to say thank you to Trish, Tricia, for getting the presentation ready for us. Ladies, you did so well that they now are asking for round two. We have now been invited to OSBA to also present. So get ready. That's what happens when you do so well. You get more work. But anyway, again, kudos to you guys for the work that you're doing here at Princeton that now many districts are trying to understand, so that they can put those type of programs into their districts. So again, thank you.
And I would say to, to piggyback on that, we already have a meeting Monday with someone that contacted me, wanting to know more about it. And I've already had another, another school contact me as well, and I got, I went to Columbus to support them. I tried to hide in a corner, but she told on me, so.
I called them out. I called them out.
She told on me, so a lot of positive, positive people coming up to me, asking questions and those things. And I said, I can give you some answers, but the experts are right there, so they're the ones. So, yeah, yeah, I expect to have a lot more people start to call, so be ready. I expect to have a lot more people start to call, so be ready.
Thank you.
Excellent. Are we utilizing our executive session?
I don't need it for the employment we had there, but it should be good.
Ms. Moore? Do you need an executive session?
No, it's all right. I'll just say what I need to say.
Ms. Cleveland, no? No? Okay. Then we do not go into executive session, and we're going to number eight, which is adjourned.
Please write a move.
Need a motion.
I move to adjourn.
I second it.
Properly moved and seconded, Ms. Pedder.
Mrs. Weider. Mrs. Cleveland.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Simons.
Yes.
Mrs. Kessler.
Yes.
Were you opposed?
Approved, and we are adjourned.
Thank you.